Greetings, everyone. We'll let our last-minute guests take their seats. Welcome. I am Tila Zazloff. I'm the editor of The Graylock Independent, which is sponsoring this whole thing. And we're delighted to be doing that. In case you don't know what we are or what we do, I brought some copies that I put somewhere, which I will hand out for free, even though we work on a subscription basis. So you're going to be listening tonight to candidates for the Planning Board. The Planning Board, except for the Select Board, is the broadest-scaled, I would say, committee or board in town with the biggest scope. So people on the Planning Board have to make very broad-scale decisions about the whole town. I like very much what was written about the Planning Board on the website, so if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to read it to you. "The Planning Board is a board created by the town with specific duties set forth in state law. The primary mission of the Board is two separate but complementary processes. One is the preparation from time to time of plans and studies relevant to the future fabric of the community." Very vague in general, but it's broad. "Studies that focus on land use, housing, recreation and conservation, business development are all relevant, as is the community's comprehensive master plan. Complementing this mission is the Board's responsibility for enforcing the Subdivision Control Act in the community and reviewing all proposals for zoning bylaw amendments, as well as proposing bylaw amendments of its own." That's quite a bunch of duties there. "While not required by law, good planning practice argues that these acts should always be performed with community support and within the vision prescribed by the plans and studies prepared by the Board." I like that. That's full of serious thought. So, without further ado, I will introduce our distinguished moderator, Bill Densmore, who will carry on with us.
Thanks, Tila. And it's great that we're all here tonight. It was kind of a rush job to get this organized, but we thought that there was enough going on in the Planning Board race this year that it would be good to get some discussion going well before the election on May 10th. So for those of you who might be watching on WillieNet and are not 100% certain what's going on here, there is a town election May 10th. And at that election, there are a number of races. There's a Selectman's race, there's a school board race, there are probably a couple of other races I'm not completely up to speed on, but there is also a race for the Planning Board. About 10 or 15 years ago, the town decided to make the Planning Board an elected board. It had been appointed by the Selectmen before that. And part of the reason for that was the perception that maybe it would be a good idea for the people of Williamstown to have an opportunity to select the character and type of people on the Planning Board may be a little different from the character and people who are on the Board of Selectmen. So what is at stake on May 10th are two seats on the Planning Board. One for five years and one for two years to fill out an unexpired term. There are three candidates running for the two-year term fill-out. One of them is Chris Kapiloff on my immediate right, a second one is Ann Hoagland to his right, and a third one is Bruce McDonald. And then there are two people running for the five-year seat. One of them is Susan Puttestor, who is at the very far end of the table tonight. And the fifth candidate, the person who's running with Susan Puttestor for the five-year seat, is Sarah Gardner. Sarah Gardner is in Baltimore tonight at a conference on climate change that she had planned to go to many months in advance. And because we wanted to go ahead and get this dialogue and discussion going, we decided to go ahead with this event without her, but we invited her to produce a video statement, which we'll show after the other candidates have given their introductory statements. It's about two minutes long. And because one other candidate, Lindsay Areeko -- and Lindsay, are you here tonight? I'm not sure I pronounced her last name correctly, but Lyn --
Eric, check.
Eric, check. Okay. Lindsay has decided earlier this week to withdraw her candidacy, so given that we have one less person and given that it turns out that Sarah's introductory remarks are about two and a half minutes. In the note that we gave to the participants here tonight, we said, "Do a 90-second introductory statement." So I'm going to suggest that people feel comfortable about going a little over that if they want to. So you can have as much as two and a half minutes, no problem. So I think we should just focus on these folks who are standing up as volunteers and offering themselves to give service to the town. And the one thing I want to say at the very beginning, and then I'll stop, is that I really admire people who are willing to take the time to serve the town. Of the five people running, two of them are going to end up serving us, but I appreciate the effort and commitment of the other people. And if you aren't on the Planning Board, I hope you'll find other ways to serve the town, and we appreciate your effort in this race and in this effort to clarify some of the issues and roles of the Planning Board. So let me turn it over to Chris and ask you to go ahead with your introductory statement.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For me, this position is primarily about the future and the next generation to occupy this town. The decisions that we make today will directly impact the prosperity or the loss that we experience a decade from now. It's unfortunate that we have such a heated debate about a single project at the time of the election. Although the Wabika decision is certainly an important one, I believe that the Planning Board is about so much more than this one hot-button topic. Planning Board is about the fabric of our town from top to bottom. Successful Board members are those who can accurately predict needs 10 or 20 years into the future and have the knowledge and ability to plan for what is coming, both to capitalize on potential and also to mitigate future consequences. It's in this capacity that I think I can offer the most to the Board. Over the past 13 years, all of the success that I've found in the business world has been derived from my ability to look down the road, predict both opportunity and complications, and plan accordingly. During the past decade, during the worst financial crisis in our lives, I've started three companies that have been recognized nationally in two cases and statewide in the other. I've built businesses that cumulatively employ over 100 people and have offices in three states. I think the most important skill that I've refined during this time is my ability to understand various roadblocks so they can be removed or circumvented. Understanding problems that won't produce consequences immediately are often overlooked, and the results are felt after it's too late to fix them and unfortunately after the Board members who made those decisions have long left office. We're feeling some of those consequences right now from choices in past decades. The closing of the Little Red Schoolhouse, the store at Five Corners, Green River Farm, Teconic Restaurant, Agway, recent cuts to Side-by-Side, and many others are consequences of not putting into action a plan that foresaw the coming economic difficulties. For years, we've been able to mitigate those consequences because surrounding towns have provided bedroom dwellers that propped up our housing, our stores and restaurants, and other companies. But with the closing of so many big companies over the past decades, and now recently with SABIC and North Adams Hospital, the time is coming when the businesses of other towns will more directly affect and dramatically affect the core of our town. Over the next decade, I believe that we must diversify our core economy. Unless we want to be subject to the success or the failure of North Adams and Pittsfield, we have to broaden our economic base. Broadening this base now will alleviate discussions in the future about which programs at West or Mount Graylock we have to cut. It can eliminate tough choices about which public services are no longer affordable or what we should do with abandoned housing. I believe that my business background is what we're missing from the current Planning Board. I can offer a perspective that will round out the Board as a whole and be a more moderate member of a Board that has a reputation for being, in other people's words, anti-business, cumbersome, restrictive, unsupportive, and protectionist. With your vote, we can make Williamstown a place that will be less hinged on the surrounding communities and ensure that our heritage and our reality can remain the same. Thank you.
Ann?
Very well said, Chris. And thank you, everybody. Thank you, Tila and Bill especially, for hosting us tonight. My name is Ann Hoagland, and I'm running for a two-year seat on the Planning Board.
Can you remind a little closer?
Certainly. How about that? How about that? Okay. My name is Ann Hoagland. I'm running for the two-year seat on the Planning Board, although I would hope to serve for a lot longer than that. I'm really young, hopefully. I've lived here for 22 years, with at times up to three generations of my family. I'm a lawyer with many years of experience, mostly representing nonprofit healthcare providers. I've worked with laws and other legal documents for decades. Zoning bylaws are our local laws, and they're obviously legal documents. They interplay with other laws, and this can be very complex. I read carefully, I write carefully, I try to think carefully. I think this background is very useful to our Planning Board. I've also engaged in many civic activities, all combining what I would say is big-picture planning and policymaking with the hard day-to-day work of on-the-ground implementation and turning concepts into realities. I founded and co-directed the Adventures in Learning Program at Williamstown Elementary, which brings college students into the elementary school to bring courses that the college students design and teach. I'm very thrilled that this program is still going on today, some 22 years after I founded it. I was a member of the Williamstown Elementary School Governance Council, co-president of the PTO at Mount Graylock, and most recently, very involved in the Williamstown Farmers' Market. I'm co-chair of the Steering Committee there, and I'm the day-to-day manager. The market is, I think, critical to our community and really goes along with a lot of the priorities that I see the Planning Board having. It enlivens Spring Street, it builds community, and it helps farmers. People expect a town like Williamstown to have a great farmers' market, and I hope that we're getting there. Looking ahead to the Planning Board, and especially to issues identified by the Economic Development Committee, I see an emphasis on the complex issues of housing and aging, and those issues becoming especially acute in the future. I'd like to participate in this work, and I think I can bring my own experience and skills to the table. Looking at the housing section of our master plan, it's especially out of date. And this is especially in light of the recent and upcoming additions to our affordable and subsidized housing stock. I think a more current lens needs to be looked through, though, for this housing part of our master plan, to look at what are the issues that are likely to face us five, 10, 20 years in the future, and translate that into research for specific zoning bylaw recommendations, especially with people in mind who fall in the gaps between subsidized housing and housing that's truly affordable. Williamstown is obviously a very expensive place to live. Our median housing listing was $500,000 last year, and over 40% of the people in our town are what's called rent-burdened, where more than 30% of their income is paid in rent. The Economic Development Committee reports that over 2,000 people commute to work in Williamstown from outside of Williamstown. Wouldn't it be great if we could enable some of those people to live here and to provide the kind of housing that they would need? So to sum up, I'm passionate about Williamstown. I feel very, very fortunate to live here. I have a long track record of community service. Because I'm retired, I can dedicate the time and energy to do a lot of the work that I think is necessary to bring us into the future, and I look forward to tackling the challenges ahead. Thank you.
Bruce?
Thank you, Ann. Very well spoken. Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank those at home for listening. My name is Bruce McDonald. I currently live at 255 Hancock Road in South Williamstown. I'm a relative newcomer to town, having only been here for several years. I would hope that that would bring to the Planning Board of Williamstown some fresh eyes, a way of seeing things perhaps that an outsider is able to see. My experience is, and I'll admit this, one of my businesses is developing real estate. And as such, I took the project of the Nehemiah Smedley Home on as a restoration project. It's located at 530 Main Street at Colonial Village. I became so involved with it that it really enamored me with the history of the town. We loved the way the town looked before we moved here. We loved the community before we moved here, but there seemed to be a sense of history that was missing. It also became apparent to me after doing the Smedley restoration that the zoning laws were antiquated, archaic, and out of date, and quite honestly, quite detrimental to any kind of business. As such, I took myself the ability to look at zoning laws, and the zoning laws that currently exist in the town of Williamstown are single-use based, very typical in the 19th and 20th centuries, for good reasons. But the 21st century, particularly in the West Coast, has found that there's a type of zoning called form-based code, which I believe, if instituted in a minimum of five geographical regions in Williamstown, could provide the stimulation of business growth and allow residential use as well. It's a multi-use situation that does not destroy the visual appearance. It's form-based, form-based meaning similar distances from setback, form-based meaning similar situations with parking and structure size. The architecturals could be similar. New structures could have a visual review by an elected board in the town, so that there's a cohesiveness, and the country-town character of Williamstown would last well into the future, while providing for multi-uses, allowing businesses to relocate, businesses to start, decreasing the dependency on the automobile. The ability to have -- and I'll give an example of the store at Five Corners. It's just a beautiful architectural landmark, but it's handcuffed as a non-conforming use right now because it doesn't comply with the single use as a store. It's not zoned accordingly. But with form-based zoning, the exterior, the architectural elements could be saved, but the interior could be allowed to produce things and sell things that would benefit people so they didn't need to drive 20 minutes to get a loaf of bread or a gallon of milk. I really believe that form-based regulations, and they are regulations, they would be upholdable, there would not be suggestions that would be made, there would be regulations, is a key that could potentially lay the foundation for future growth and business growth in Williamstown. No zoning change in the town is going to overnight change the town and reverse the financial fortunes, but when the foundation is laid, there will be a continuous improvement. That's my position. That's what I would like to do on the Planning Board if I'm so elected. And as far as industry is concerned, I would just like to say that my opinion is in the foreseeable future. The best industry of Williamstown, probably the only industry, will be tourism, and that we need to protect the way Williamstown looks today, and we need to protect the way it's going to look in the future, but we need to revitalize the business aspect of our community. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bruce. I'm going to just take note of the fact that what you said was interesting, but it was also a little longer than what other people have put in, so I'm going to sort of dock you about a minute along the evening here. But Susan, go ahead.
You can have my minute.
Hi, I'm Susan Puttestor. Thanks so much for having me, and thanks, everybody, for being here. Everybody up here has some great qualifications. Everybody's really different, and I'm probably the most different. This is my first experience in town government, although I grew up in a small town in Vermont. I have lived in a small town for 20 years, so I'm back after being gone for 32 years. I lived in Annapolis for 32 years, and my background is social work. I worked in the senior center, where I set up a program for seniors that needed some help in the senior center. So we started with one program, and we moved it into seven senior centers. So with that, there was an awful lot of consensus building, working with seniors who didn't want to have the program in the senior center, working with many other programs within the Department of Aging to get cooperation. Another thing you do as a social worker is you do a lot of listening, and you're patient, and you try to let other people express their views and help guide them to making the right decision. So I had those years as a social worker in Maryland, working in geriatrics. I also had the opportunity to run a small business for a few years, so I've had the experience of being an entrepreneur, the good and the bad of that. Then we moved to Williamstown, and as most of you know, shortly after we arrived in 2011, Tropical Storm Irene followed. And I have been involved with the residents of the Spruces and the organization that was formed, Higher Ground. As a matter of fact, day two, I took all of our shovels and our wheelbarrow over to the Spruces Mobile Home Park, and we never saw them again. But that was fine. That was fine, because, you know, there needed to be something done. And so this community came together in a wonderful way, faith-based organizations, community-based organizations, individuals, to help the people at the Mobile Home Park. And we housed people in hotels. The college allowed some of the residents to live in apartments there, and so it was just a really great experience. So after four and a half years, last month, the first residence moved into Highland Woods, which wouldn't have happened without the teamwork of this town. And so I think that the teamwork is really critical in Williamstown. The Board of Selectmen had decided that there should be some looking into the economic development of our town. That committee spent almost a year, lots and lots of time, developing a plan, which was submitted to the Board of Select, and they approved it. And, you know, one of the important things is to improve the economic development, improve the tax base of Williamstown. You know, we are going to build a new high school. We have an elementary school that's in financial trouble, and we have to figure out a way to pay for these things. I'm worried that without a bigger tax base, some of the seniors who live in town on fixed incomes are really going to suffer if we aren't able to get things moving. So there's a lot of different objectives to be met, and the Planning Board worked very hard up until September, trying to follow some of the recommendations of the Select Board and the Economic Development Board, but for the last seven months have been kind of hijacked by one issue. And it would have been great if we could have come to a conclusion, written something that we could agree on, or even just a place to start. So I see that I would really like to serve this town further, now that Higher Ground and Highland Woods are off, and to work on the Planning Board, to try to work through some of those recommendations that both the Economic Development Committee and the Board of Select had recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. So I'm going to now play Sarah Gardner's --
Hi, I'm Sarah Gardner. I'm currently on the Planning Board and running for reelection. I know this may sound crazy, but I actually enjoy going to night meetings. Land use planning is my field. I read planning listers every day, I go to planning conferences, and I attend workshops to stay current in the field. I also teach planning at Williams College. I wrote my dissertation about brownfield redevelopment planning, and I worked at the Office of State Planning in New Jersey before moving up here. Zoning used to be really boring. Basically, through the '80s, we had Euclidean zoning that separated industry, commerce, and housing into different areas and towns. But that strategy backfired. It created suburban sprawl. As we all know, that sprawl ate up farmland and killed town centers by replacing them with strip malls. So we learned that all growth is not good growth. If you travel around the country, you'll see lots of examples of bad development. So now we have a whole array of creative zoning mechanisms available to reverse the zoning mistakes of the past. This new progressive approach to planning is called new urbanism, or smart growth, or sustainable development. It's about revitalizing town centers and creating walkable communities, allowing more compact development in town, limiting sprawl, directing development toward brownfields instead of greenfields, keeping clear distinctions between rural areas and developed areas to protect farmland and natural resources. Some people think these principles don't apply to Williamstown, but I think we should remain a leader in these principles. The point of sustainable development is that environmental goals and economic development goals go hand in hand. Good environmental planning is good economic planning. We've heard some statements lately about all the things that are wrong with Williamstown. I guess I don't agree. There are a lot of good things happening here right now. Highland Woods, Cable Mill, Fotec, a new hotel at the bottom of Spring Street, the bike path. Water Street will soon be rebuilt with good sidewalks, a bike lane, and lots of on-street parking to support the businesses there. And thanks to the COOL Committee, we're one of the first towns in the Commonwealth to have a climate action plan. Last but not least, through heroic efforts, we will soon have a new high school. This, perhaps more than anything, will be a boost to this town. So our town is on the upswing. We've managed to develop without sprawling onto our open spaces. We've retained our community character. The town planning process should fully involve the public and should be marked by open, honest, and respectful discussion of the issues. By working together, we can get a lot done. If reelected to the Planning Board, I promise to continue the work the Board has been doing for years, finding ways to revise and refine our zoning bylaw to promote smart development. We can develop and expand our tax base while also preserving our landscape. This is my vision for the town.
What I'd like to do now is move into a portion of the program that the people sitting here were briefed about in advance through all the advance work that Tila did. And what we did is we asked each candidate to identify a question that they would like to ask to the other candidates. And we emailed those questions to all of the candidates. So the questions that you're going to hear asked are not sprung on anybody else on the panel. They've all had a chance to at least look at them and think about their response. So what I'm going to do now is, again, go down the line here and ask each of you to take the question that you submitted in advance. Ask it, reword it a little bit if you like, as long as it's in the same general domain. And I would invite each of the other candidates on the panel here to respond, if they wish, to that question.
Bill, do you happen to have copies of the questions? Because we didn't bring them with us.
I do.
At least I didn't.
Yes. I can either -- I have one copy. I can read them. Shall I read them all once so that we know it's coming?
Sure.
Or just read each one?
Each one individually.
Okay. Okay. So let me start then, just because yours happens to be the first one on my list here, Chris's question. Chris's question was, "What changes can be made in order to attract the kind of economic growth we need?" And I'm going to take it that when you asked that question, you meant mostly what zoning changes can be made. But if I'm wrong about that, correct me.
No, as it would relate to the Planning Board.
Okay. So you're welcome to take that in any order you like, or we can just go down the line if you want.
Let's mix it up.
I guess I can start. Chris, I feel that if proper zoning is put into place, growth will come. If businesses by right have the ability to start their business or to relocate to the town, then -- and there aren't a gauntlet of boards which they have to go through, then I believe that business will come because the population of Williamstown has needs and has ability to pay for things. There's no reason that we should have to go to Pittsfield or Bennington or North Adams for certain services and goods. They should be available here, but when the zoning places such hurdles and obstacles in the path of relocating here, it just puts it out of reach. That's my opinion. Proper zoning will again lay the foundation for business growth and tax increase, tax base increase.
Ann?
All righty. Well, I think I'll talk generally, Ann specifically, about the zoning bylaw. I think it's a great question. We should certainly take the lead from the work of the Economic Development Committee. And I don't think And I don't think any single magic wand is going to solve our problems, nor do I think it's a single problem. It's a complex set of problems and a complex set of approaches. I think we should not forget or detract from the basic building blocks that we already have in place. These don't necessarily apply to zoning, but I think they're worth mentioning. First, the commitment to excellent public schools. The EDC report emphasized how that is key to our town. When we moved here in 1994, the quality of education was the single biggest factor in our move. We looked all over Berkshire County. Our children at the time were ages two, five, and eight. We had a lot of years of public school ahead of us as a family. We decided to come here. I hope that people continue to come here and stay here and I'm thrilled with the new high school that will be coming soon. Secondly, finding ways to increase tourism. Joe Thompson from Mass Mooca made a really interesting presentation to the EDC last year and he made some suggestions that don't require making any dramatic changes or significant capital investments, playing to our strengths as a tourist-based economy and encouraging people to stay here longer. If they're coming for the afternoon, encourage them to stay one night. If they're coming for one night, encourage them to stay for a weekend. That multiplies the benefits to the town. There's already great progress in this area with the concerted efforts of Destination Williamstown, the new town website, the cultural district partnership, and so on. And I think we should keep working on all those. More specific to the planning board, I've already mentioned, increasing our housing diversity. That is a key focus for the planning board. We need to scour our zoning bylaws to see how we can change them to improve our housing diversity and choices, to include moderately priced housing especially. Look at what people who want to run a small business here need. I'm thrilled that the planning board is looking, is recommending for this town meeting, loosening the rules for home occupations. Let's also continue to research broadband. What are the options for expanding broadband? What are the costs? What role should the town play in all of this? What zoning barriers exist to bringing healthcare services to town? I think the planning board can play a role with that as well. And we do have some commercially developable space. How best to utilize that? How about collaborative workspaces? Young people especially seem to love collaborative workspaces that even combine recreation and food and craft areas. Let's think out of the box. We can learn a lot from other communities. We have a lot of possibilities here as well.
Well, I would say in answer to that question, I think that the Economic Development Committee has really set some standards or made some suggestions of how that can be accomplished. And I really think that the planning board as a group needs to be leaders and guide people through the process, help them find a way to make things work, you know, and try not to go off down side roads and divert from what the real question is and just work with people to try to see if we can make it easier for new businesses to come into Williamstown and thrive.
Thank you, Susan. I'm going to actually now go to the question you asked, Susan.
Okay.
Because it's sort of on, in the same general ballpark of this conversation. You wrote recently, "The planning board, when reviewing a couple of projects that would have increased the town's tax base, asked about marketing studies and architectural drawings, among other things. Do you agree that it's appropriate for the planning board to ask for those items which are outside the authority of the board?" Do you want to take that? Chris?
Sure.
Yep.
I don't know that it's outside the authority of the board. I think that Mass General Law doesn't prohibit the board from very much at all. It's a very broadly worded chapter. But I do not think that it is a good idea to have our boards ask such questions. And let me give a few examples why. The first comes from our strategies for economic growth in Williamstown, developed by the Williamstown Economic Development Committee. And I'm going to, I have some pages here, there's about three of them, and I'm just going to read some various things that I've underlined here. Many in the community felt we should do more to attract support of businesses. Residents noticed that there were too many vacant retail and commercial properties. Several business owners noted the anti-business sentiment in the community, noting restrictive zoning laws, cumbersome town hall processes, et cetera. Many felt that the community should do more to support entrepreneurs and startup companies. I think that it is entirely inappropriate to be asking for things like was asked of Mike Deep. And I would like to read from the minutes of the Williamstown Planning Board from January 26th. Now, to be fair, these minutes have not been approved by the committee, but this is just a quote that somebody wrote. There was research, I'm sorry, this is a quote from one of the current planning board members. There was research presented at previous meetings noting that existing hotels are struggling. We shouldn't be allowing this without a market study. We could perhaps harm existing hotels. Do we protect our friends' hotels here in Williamstown from people who want to come and develop here? Do we want to maintain the status quo at the expense of our town's future? Does the planning board want to have a planned economy here in Williamstown where we decide if something is economically good for our town based on existing town businesses? I think that that's a really dangerous precedent to set. I talk daily with architects from around the country and when we talk, when we're just shooting the breeze and we're talking, one of the things that they often say is, we need to move out of, and you can fill in the blank, San Francisco, Boston, Austin, places all around the country, because in places like that, they're getting charged anywhere between fifty and eighty dollars a square foot for rent each year to have these high rises. And they're unhappy with the level of education. And I want to say to them, come to Williamstown. You can build a building for what you rent one for in only three to four years. We have one of the top 200 high schools in the nation. We have one of the top colleges in the world. We have amazing beauty that you can be part of. But if I invited them to come seriously take a look at Williamstown and some member of the planning board said, you know what, we already have an architecture firm here and you moving here might hurt that, so I don't want to see that proposal until we know that we can protect our area businesses. I think it's a terrible precedent to set and I think we need to have our planning board reverse its course in these kind of questions.
Ann?
Okay, I'm going to go back to just some thoughts on the Williams Inn and the Wabika project in light of what the planning board asked. I think they're very different projects. The Williams Inn was moving a lot, moving closer to town. It was reducing rooms and I believe it was a project fully consistent with our master plan. The college did a lot more than was asked by the planning board and the college made the choice to table its proposal for a year to do more studies. I think the Wabika proposal is completely different. Mike Deep came to several planning board meetings with absolutely no information about the project except a verbal vision, which changed over time. For several months, it was a simple country inn. Then it became a resort spa. Then it became a massive timeshare development. It was virtually impossible for the planning board to develop a bylaw without any information, without any sense of what this proposal would be. He was asking, Mike Deep was asking, to rezone a key rural area in our scenic gateway, something that's not consistent with our master plan. I think it was reasonable to ask him to do a little homework.
Bruce?
I agree with you, Ann. I think that was very well stated. The problem with the Wabika application is that it's spot-zoned. It's non-conforming use. If the town had proper zoning and a plan, it wouldn't be necessary. Spot zoning would become a thing of the past. Businesses would by right be able to relocate, they would be able to build in the districts that were designated for that purpose. I think that's the essence of it. If you had proper planning, then we wouldn't have projects like Wabika come before the town, which is clearly in an appropriate, in an inappropriate area for certain business uses. The way Mr. Deep approached it originally, Ann stated perfectly. It started out as a boutique country inn. I think there's a tremendous need for something like that. And there would be, in my opinion, an acceptable place, but it's not zoned for that. So the planning board has an extremely difficult problem dealing with a project that's being requested in an area that it's not supposed to be. And I think that's a problem of zoning and I would work very hard to correct that problem of zoning. Thank you.
You had, Chris, a quick comment you wanted to add before we move on to the next question?
Yes, thank you. This is why I said in my opening statement that I hate that this hot-button topic is getting put onto this election. You know, you will soon hear my opinion of the Wabika proposal, so I won't go into that right now. But my point is that generally, this one specific thing aside, generally it is bad business to have five planning board members who are not experts, in this example, in hotels, in economics, in business development, be having a litmus test for something that should not be in their purview.
Thank you. There are two more questions that were asked in advance by people running. They both actually do, at least indirectly, deal with this Wabika proposal. So I think we'll take it, but I do intend to try and keep us from focusing all of the rest of this evening on that one topic, but let's get those questions out of the way Bruce McDonald asked, "Do you approve of the citizens' petition to change the zoning of Wabika Golf Course submitted by Mike Deep's attorney? And if not, please specify the details of what proposal you would accept, if any." And Ann asked that that question be asked of everybody and she said, "I have a follow-up question. If you do support the petition as written, please explain how the scope of development allowed by the petition is consistent with the town's values." So I guess what I'm going to say is, let's just, let's just all, even not respecting who asked the question, let's go down the line again and all discuss that subject and see if we can fully chew that cut and then move on to some other things. So, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Empirically, I do not support a forty-acre development at Wabika Golf Course. Forty-acre development is not in line, I believe, with our, the town values, the town aesthetic, and I think just from a practical matter, it wouldn't be physically possible anyways, given what I know about the soil, water, and other things. I grew up on the second hole of the golf course. My parents still live there. My grandparents live directly across the street from the clubhouse. I have a great aunt who lives near the ninth tee box and a great uncle who lives two doors down. The Rhodes family at one point owned the entire Wabika Golf Course. And I feel tied to that land. My very first business, which was a lemonade stand on the second hole, really gave me the background for all that I do today. But I think that there's two dangerous things that could happen with the golf course. The one dangerous thing that I hear a lot is about a forty-acre development, but here's another really dangerous thing that I think we need to think about. Every time I pass Brody Mountain Ski Resort, for the last year, I think, what if Wabika looked like that? Imagine a Wabika that's abandoned for just one year where an owner declares bankruptcy and walks away from it. The greens are ruined, the sand traps are ruined, the whole place just looks like a defunct golf course. If we really want to protect our southern gateway, I think what we need to do is figure out a way that the business can survive. I agree with my opponents here that the evolution of Mike Deep's proposals has been dizzying. But one thing that he has been able to convince me of, as have the previous four owners of the golf course, all of which I've known, is that the golf course as a standalone, four month a year business is not viable. It's just not viable. I reject the premise that we have to choose between a forty-acre development and a resort that looks like Brody Mountain. I think we need to figure out a way to compromise. I could be talked into, I think, a three-acre, forty-room, fifty-room hotel and event center so that the people in Williamstown and around can use the facility twelve months a year instead of three months a year. I've not made a final decision on that primarily because a proposal for that specific thing has not been put forward yet. If the details for that were right, I think that that could be something that would enhance South Williamstown and the town as a whole.
Ann?
I don't support the citizens' petition as written. In fact, I co-wrote a very detailed analysis of what I feel are the defects in the proposed bylaw. I will now read it. No, I'm kidding. That's available on the Graylock Independent website. But I've never opposed the original concept of a country inn at Wabika, surrounded by well-protected open space. What I might accept, Bruce asked, I might accept a well-drafted bylaw that's fair to the town, that's consistent with our master plan, not slanted in favor of the developer, and a bylaw that addresses many of the drafting concerns that I mentioned in the analysis. I might accept, and I would accept, a good public process with planning board consideration and review and public input. I think trying to patch up the citizens' petition on the floor of town meeting would be a disaster. As for the content of the proposed bylaw, based on my own research and without the benefit of what I hope would be a very productive public process on this, here are a few thoughts that I have in mind. Going back to the original country inn concept, as Chris mentioned, an inner boutique hotel with a limit of somewhere in the forty, fifty, maybe sixty-five, as Bruce suggested, number of rooms, not timeshares. Timeshares raise a whole host of more complicated issues. That would be smaller than the current Williams Inn, smaller than a lot of chain hotels. It would be kind of in keeping with the Hotel on North or the Porches. Great Barrington, a town of almost the same population as Williamstown, has a forty-five-room limit. I bet there's some research that backs that up. It would be interesting to know why they put a forty-five-room limit for new hotels in Great Barrington. I think a three-hundred-seat banquet hall that Mike Deep has proposed is way too big and also increases the size of the parking lot enormously. I think a three-acre to maybe five-acre building envelope makes a lot of sense. Again, this is based on my own research, not based on close public process. But based on some of the research we did as to other hotels, it doesn't take a lot of acres to put a small country inn up. And finally, I think that meaningful open space protection is really important. Mike has promised to keep the golf course open if he's allowed to build his inn, but the bylaw needs to reflect that. That's basically it.
Thank you. Bruce?
Thank you, Ann. I think the first and foremost thing to remember is that when dealing with Wabika, we're not dealing with the current owner. The current owner has made it abundantly clear repeatedly that he will not be the developer. So any guidelines or any requirements that we put on that development must be for whoever comes in. And I can tell you right now, if it were forty acres, any developer that I know would develop forty acres, not thirty-nine, not thirty-nine and a half. Forty acres. Myself and my family have a bird's-eye view of Wabika. We're probably the only house that can see the clubhouse lights every night. We see the entire golf course because we're up on a hill at 255 Hancock Road looking down. People have said, well, we certainly don't want house lots there. Well, by right, Mr. Deep would have the ability to put, I guess, somewhere between nine and eleven house lots in there. From my perspective, as in a butter, that would be insignificant to me, completely insignificant. But as somebody that lives in town, I would support smart development. I would support an inn. I believe that five acres is ample to build it on. I believe sixty-five rooms is ample and I don't believe a developer would start with sixty-five rooms. I would like to see things like an indoor swimming pool and an indoor tennis court. I would... I would like to see a spa. I would like to see it become a destination for Williamstown, where people came and stayed and spent the weekend and went to Spring Street and went to galleries, at least the galleries that used to be here. I would like to see it be a plus for the town, but it needs to be done properly. I would want to know the five acres that was going to be developed and where they were located, not just anywhere. I would want the planning board to have design review so that an ugly monstrosity could not be built. So I would support the development, but clearly not the way Mr. Deep has presented it. And I can't stress enough that it's not Mr. Deep that anyone should listen to, or it's not a personal issue. It has nothing to do with him. He will not be the developer. But if we put in proper guidelines, then we can have smart development, and I think it would be a big plus for the town to have a development like that. Thank you, Neton.
A lot of good points made here. I think it's just too bad that the planning board wasn't able to work with the landowner and that he felt that he had to go to a petition. He has every right to do that because he owns his property and he wants to keep it viable. I think it would be really unfortunate if Wabika, as Chris said, ended up becoming overgrown. My husband and I lived next to a golf course in Maryland, and that's exactly what happened. The golf course went out of business. It was a great, beautiful golf course and went out of business. And when you drove by it after that, it was just big fields that were unmoed and wasn't as pleasant as it was before, and then the building was run down. So, you know, that's a consequence of not being able to work together to come up with something. And I'm not sure if you have all seen that there have been some revised suggestions about what the landowner is willing to do. So he has taken it down to 10 acres. And I don't think, you know, based on my experience, and I'm not a planner, I'm not a builder, that all 10 acres is going to be buildable. I mean, you know, I learned with the building of Highland Woods that the college gave us, I think it was four and 1/2 acres, but you couldn't build on four and 1/2 acres. You know, you can't build on the whole lot. You have to, you pick an area, and then you go and you look at that area and you say, "We can't build here because there's water here," or, you know, "There's some endangered species." So there's a lot of factors that go into where you're going to place the inn. And I myself don't have enough expertise to know what the magic number for an inn would be. We read the September minutes when the first proposal was introduced, and the, I guess, he called it a New England-style inn with three stories. Of course, if it's a golf course already, the pre-existing buildings are going to have to remain. So, you know, I think there's still a lot of work to be done, and I hope that the planning board can work together with the landowner and the Board of Select to come up with a good plan.
Bill, can I make a point?
Sure.
I've already sent a notice to the candidates, but is Stephen Dravas here?
He is.
So I'm really just quoting an article that he just did Tuesday in Iberkshers. But there are meetings going on now in an attempt to change the citizens' petition to be more amenable to town wishes. I don't know if this is a proper process or anything's going to happen with it, but it is an attempt, including, am I right, the town manager and the select board, to change the citizens' petition to accommodate some of the complaints that people have been making. Does anyone from the audience have any more to say about that?
It can't be changed. They're trying to create an amendment that could be introduced on the floor of town meeting that would address some of the...
Just walk over with the mic.
Okay. Would you say that again, please?
A citizen petition, by definition, cannot be changed before a town meeting. There's an effort to write an amendment that could be introduced on the floor of town meeting that would address some of the concerns about the bylaws written.
Okay, thank you. And some people are saying that the floor of town meeting is not the proper place to try to amend this. I think that was in Stephen's article also.
Just for the, yes, go ahead. For the television audience, that was Stephen Dravas, who was a reporter for Iberkshers, who just gave us that piece of factual information.
My name's Hugh Daly, selectman in town. My understanding of the process that's going to occur is that some negotiations have gone on, and the goal is to bring it to the planning board so that it gets into the public process correctly. This is not, this amendment to the citizens' petition is not trying to occur outside of public channels. I want to make sure that everybody understands that the goal is to bring it to the planning board, have them vet it as it moves along.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, identify yourself.
Joan Blair, South Williamstown. This is all very interesting. I'm not here because of the Wabika development. I'm here as a voter to try to decide who to vote for, for the planning board of 2017 and beyond. So I would welcome some questions that move us in that direction.
Yes. Well, a question I'd like to actually, in our planning for this event, I said that I would ask no more than two questions myself, and I do have two questions. And the first one is something that was actually mentioned in Anne's candidate's statement, which reminded me that this was a good question to ask, and that is that we went through a very detailed process that resulted in a master plan for the town that was effective, if you have the date right, in 2002. And that's a long time to go without updating the master plan. And the planning board has responsibility for thinking about things like land use, housing, recreation, conservation, in addition to business development, which is sort of what we've been hijacked by in the conversation tonight. So I'd like to ask each of you to just respond briefly to, if you were thinking about how to review, update, change the emphasis of the 2002 master plan, what would you be thinking about? If that becomes a task of the next planning board, how would you suggest that be addressed? And what are some of the issues you'd want to take a look at in updating the master plan? Chris?
Well, I'm happy to start first for all of the questions.
Thought you didn't know.
Well, I'll start at the other end with the second question, because that's right. It's tough to go first.
I should just be graded on a curve.
Well, if anybody wants to go ahead and is ready to go and give Chris a pass for a minute, that would be great.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
But you have to add 10% to my score. I don't have the time. So I have a copy of the December 2002 Williamstown Master Plan here, and I also have a copy of the 2015 Williams Economic Development Committee's report. They say the same thing. We have a hard time retaining young people. We have a hard time attracting business. We have great schools. We have a good tourism trade. It seems like our problems and the places that we excel has not changed over the past several decades. There have been some things that have changed, but the big issues here have not changed. I think what we really need to do is we need to put in place, we need to put in practice, what we already know. Williamstown is a place unlike most other places on this entire planet. As a town, I bet per capita, we know more or as much as any other place on earth. I think that my ability in running a company can really help push the planning committee to doing. We need to move beyond our 2002 report that says all of the things that it says and our 2015 report that basically highlights all the things that were made known to us in 2002. I will be the person, because I have to do this in my job every single day, a theory is okay. Putting something in practice is when things get done.
Thank you. Anne?
I could not agree more, so, great. Let's get started.
10% is not eligible for you, though.
You just said all the right stuff. I think, in considering how to go about updating the master plan, my first sense is, wow, this could be an overwhelming job. I think that the 2002 master plan took about three years. Hopefully, we could do it a lot more quickly this time. I looked at the state statute that underpins master planning efforts, and it was very interesting. First of all, the master plan provides a statutory basis for what the planning board does. I thought that was interesting. The planning board is tied to Massachusetts law in its work. And then the state law goes through certain components of the master plan, and as I looked at them, I thought, well, maybe just one process kind of thought is, let's look at these components in chunks. Let's see if we can, instead of being overwhelmed by the whole task, look at each task, figure out how best to approach it, and then maybe bring it together as a whole. And some of them, fortunately, we're doing pretty well on. Economic development envelope, I'd say we checked that one off for right now. We did pretty well on that very recently. Open space and recreation, apparently, we never finished our open space plan back in 2003, but there is work right now to get that done. Circulation element, existing and proposed circulation and transportation systems. I think, you know, we can look at the parking study that's underway right now and some of the other work being done to enhance Water Street and so forth. So I think we have a lot of the groundwork that's already in place for putting together these elements of the master plan. Housing, as I've said before, that's a huge emphasis. That would be my first priority in the master plan review, and as I said, I think it's a particularly out-of-date section of the master plan. But we are doing a lot of the groundwork already. We have a housing needs assessment underway by the Affordable Housing Committee, or it's going to be starting very soon. We have a parking needs assessment being done. We have a lot of work regarding age-friendly communities. So we have a lot of the pieces in place. We have a lot of work being done, but it's going to be a big job, and I would look forward to participating in that.
Bruce?
I agree with both Chris and Anne. Can I get 20% for that?
Sure.
I believe that the key to working with the economic program is proper zoning and to plan a proper-zoned town so that businesses and different functions can occur in a mixed-use area versus single-use areas. And I think if the zoning, if the planning board put its collective heads together and designated certain areas for form-based regulations, not single-use, then I think the economic committee's suggestions could be easily accommodated, more easily accommodated. And I think that's the key. That would be my suggestion.
I would agree with Chris and Anne, and I would also support Anne in the housing piece. And she did mention the Affordable Housing Committee in Van. Elidus here, he's the chair. She didn't mention that the planning board was working on that, and Anne McCollum had designed a plan for a multifamily development. So the work is being done. So I think we're off to a good start as far as the housing.
Can I give you a planning board update?
Sure. Yeah.
Anne McCollum, I'm a member of the planning board. The master plan, which was done, was it 2002 or 2003? Two. Was a monumental effort, as someone has already said, and by law, we're supposed to redo that every 10 years. So it came out in the planning board in 2012, and we didn't do it. It was such a huge effort to do. It took like 50 people the last time in many years. And what we did instead, which was sort of allowed, slid through the cracks there, and we did an update. So we went through every part of the old master plan and looked at it, and we made a list of action items, things that we hadn't done in the master plan that we should do now. So that's where it stands. But I did remember one thing. When we were at the planning board meeting, it was a joint planning board and select board meeting, where many of these, well, Chris was there, Bruce was not there. Anyway, when we were trying to fill the temporary space on the planning board that came up when somebody resigned, I do remember that Sarah Gardner said she would love to spearhead the master plan, and that was an amazing thing to volunteer for. She was a huge part of it in 2012, so she knows what she's in for. So she... 2002. Sorry, 2002. And so we really do need to do that. So there's a statement from somebody who's not here that she would be willing to spearhead that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. The other question I'd like to ask is actually going to be a conflation of two other questions that people emailed us, and then I'm going to try to put a little bit of a spin on it. Harry Montgomery wrote in, noting that several candidates live near the Wabika Golf Course. Would you recuse yourselves abstain from decisions in such cases which present possible conflicts of interest? And then Wanda Bubriski asked to the candidates, "Are you or anyone in your household employed by Williams College? If yes, would you recuse yourself from discussion and voting regarding all projects or requests involving Williams College?" I attended, I guess, what was the last planning board meeting, and I was interested to see the invocation of what's called the rule of necessity. And I was very curious about what that was, so I called up the State Ethics Commission and learned that it's an interpretation of a number of court rulings that is the guidance provided by the State Ethics Commission about what you should do if you're sitting as an elected official or an appointed official on a town board, and you have to deal with an issue that involves some economic or employment interest. And the answer, the advice they give is, you should, if it involves a majority of the board that have a conflict, then you need to contact town council, ask town council what to do, and then go through a process, which appeared to be a process that, from my point of view, seemed to have been properly invoked at that meeting. But I think that this whole, the issue of what are your entanglements in a small town are very tricky, because this is a small town. Everybody is involved in something in some way. But, so I guess I would just like to ask a sort of wide-open question, and that is, how do you, as candidates, imagine yourself dealing with the question of conflicts of interest and sort of maintaining a trust with the public about how you conduct your role on a volunteer board? And I'm going to ask Susan, you go first, so that you don't, so that we don't have, we don't really prejudice Chris.
But Chris doesn't even have to answer the question. Do you, oh, you, yes, you live near, you live near that place, okay. So, yes, I, if the college comes to the planning board, I would have to say that I am married to Fred Puttister, who is an employee of the college, and I would try to follow the ethics guidelines as the other members have done in the past. Chris Winters is an employee, Sarah Gardner is an employee, and Elizabeth McGowan, who will be leaving, was an employee. So I won't have any problem. I frequently disagree with my husband. You can just ask him.
Bruce?
Well, we are abutters to Wabika. The way I would handle that personally is, I would make it in a public meeting. I would make it clear that I am an abutter. If I were a golfer and played Wabika, I would make that clear. If I dined there on a regular basis, I would make that clear. And I would defer to the chair of the planning board to see if she felt that any of those were conflict, and if she thought they were, I would recuse myself in a heartbeat. With regards to the Williams College situation, I did not graduate from Williams College. I'm not employed by Williams College. But in full disclosure, my wife is a nurse and has substituted as a nurse on occasion at Williams College. To your point of it's a small town and everybody does it. I personally don't feel that that is a conflict, but I would be happy to voice it at any public meeting if I was sitting on the board with regards to a conflict of interest.
Of course, I would follow all ethics guidelines in my service on the planning board, and I assume everybody else running would do the same thing. Nobody in my family is employed locally. It's kind of too bad, as far as my kids are concerned, from my perspective, but nobody in my family is employed by Williams College. I went there... I went there in the 1970s. I don't think that counts. I'm not in a butter of Wabika. I am familiar with the conflict of interest guidelines regarding a butters, and to my knowledge, I don't qualify. I don't fit into those guidelines. I don't think the fact that I live in South Williamstown disqualifies me or gives me any particular conflict of interest. But I would, of course, follow any guidance that came from the State Ethics Commission or town council.
I am no longer in a butter at Wabika Golf Course, although for a long time I was. I think that, you know, every member is going to have its own litmus test for how we view the golf course. In a small town, we're all connected to it in some way, for good or bad, and to think that we're going to make a decision in a vacuum, I think is unreasonable. We all have things that we, that form our background, the backbone of how we make our choices. So let me tell you what mine is. I have three children, a daughter, nine, a son, seven, and another son, a little boy that my wife and I adopted from the Congo, who just turned four. And this is our forever home. I and my wife made this decision when I was on the school committee in 2004. We just fell in love with the town and the townspeople's desire to be involved in everyday life. The decision that I will finally come to on the golf course will be made solely in the decision of what the best choice for my three children are going to be. I would really like to have a town where, if they want, there's opportunity for them to come back. And that will be the litmus test for me on almost all the decisions that I make as a planning board member.
Thank you, Chris. I'd like to open up questions from the audience now. If anybody's raring to go, come on up and ask a question. If not, I've got one question to keep things flowing while you all think of questions out there. Has anybody got anything on their mind right now? Okay. One of the, I guess I'm going to be a little bit of a proxy for something I read in Sarah Gardner's statement. Oh, by the way, just if, I think maybe Tila mentioned this at the beginning, but all of the candidate statements which you heard read tonight are on the graylockindependent.com website. And you will find that Sarah talked a little bit about farmland and open space in her statement, and she noted that there used to be in 1970 about 25 dairy farms in Williamstown, and now there are two or three, depending how you count them. And she notes that because of climate change, it may be the case that New England will become more fertile ground for farming in future years, at the same time that places like California, which is America's breadbasket, become less fertile because of drought and other types of climate change. And the gist of her statement is a sort of plea for thinking carefully about what we do to keep our good farmland available for use as the economics of climate change and a changing world make it more important to us. So I guess what I'd like to ask is, in light of sort of thinking about the master plan, does anybody, could each of you just speak to whether you have any particular ideas for preserving or reusing farmland? And how would you, how would you suggest we get guidance or advice for handling that? Why don't we go to the middle of the pack here and ask Bruce if you could take that, and then I'll go to Ann, and then Susan, and then Chris.
Well, it's been my observation that Williamstown has done an excellent job of preserving its farmland. I do, I can tell you right now that in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the most endangered wildlife habitat is the meadow. And the reason for that is not, as everyone would say, well, we've filled our meadows with housing developments. It's that if you cease to mow a meadow, it becomes woodland. And for that reason, I feel that we should endeavor to maintain our meadows as much as possible, but I would look for direction from the farmers in Williamstown directly. And it seems like there must be more than two farms. We have two in my backyard, but, and that doesn't even include Galusha. But, you know, I think to involve the farmers in these sorts of discussions would be very valuable, and that's what I would suggest doing.
Following up on that great suggestion, the Center for Environmental Studies at Williams is looking into exactly that question, really, and farms as economic drivers in the community. Because I think sometimes, or, you know, it's sometimes thought that economic development is different from farming. It's not. They're very interrelated and very close. I think we've already got a lot of other great work going on. The Agricultural Commission is doing some great work in Williamstown to promote and sustain farming. The Keep Berkshire's Farming Initiative that Sarah Gardner is very involved in is very active. We are a right-to-farm community now, and that's terrific. And in 2014, I believe, the Berkshire Natural Resources Commission, actually, I think I've got that name wrong, anyway, a big report on sustainable Berkshires, which has a lot on farming. So, yeah, I think it's key to keep farming, in our view, as a priority of Williamstown, and not to take it for granted. Of course, the farmer's market, I think, is key there as well. Have an outlet for farm produce, and have people meet farmers and understand what is farming all about.
Well, as I said before, I grew up in a small town in Vermont, and I know that it's not just Williamstown where the number of farms in a certain area are declining. Farming is very hard work, and products that we used to only get from farmers are much less expensive and easily bought at a grocery store. And that just happens to be a fact of life. But I think it is important to keep farming in Williamstown. I know we have an awful lot of protected land, and so I don't think there's an issue with not having enough open space. And I think, you know, if people can farm the land and make a profit, then they should be encouraged to do so.
Every business needs to be able to do two things. Every business owner needs to be able to decide for themselves how their business can produce things that people want to buy. And every business owner needs customers who can buy those things. I think in Williamstown, we're suffering because our population is lower than it was back in the 1980s. I think that the amount of people in our town who are struggling financially is increasing, which lowers the amount of customers that are available to purchase things. So I would offer two suggestions. One, I think we need to change our zoning limiters for farms so that farmers can engage in things like light manufacturing. When I say light manufacturing, I don't mean opening up a giant brick building with a smokestack. I mean making things like arts and crafts and other sorts of creative things that can be sold locally and also globally. And having places where people can come and live on an amount of money that farmers can actually pay. My wife and I are longtime members of Caretaker Farm, a fantastic place. A lot of the work there, though, is done by people who are willing to come and work for free, to live in a cabin in the backyard. And they work, in essence, to be able to learn the trade that Don does down there incredibly well. But imagine if we couldn't find people to come work for free, and we could only pay them a $12 to $15 an hour wage. I don't think there's a place in Williamstown that that person could live. So I think by opening our zoning restrictions on farms and by being able to provide more affordable housing, we can increase both the customers who are able to produce or to purchase goods and increase the availability to produce goods that customers will want.
Thank you, Chris. We have-
Just a note on what the planning board has already done on that issue. In recent years, we have suggested bylaws, and they've been passed by the town, opening up more income-producing possibilities for farms, one of which is to allow weddings and small concerts, another is crafts and stores that they're allowed to have. So we are thinking about that, and anything, we, on the planning board, and I think this reflects the interests of the town as a whole, feel that it's in the interests of all of us to keep these farms solvent and active and prosperous. So anything we can do that helps them economically to make them more viable, we are interested in. And the commission is active in suggesting things, and we are active in helping them pass those things.
Another comment?
My name is Elizabeth Smith, and I'm the former farmer at Caretaker Farm. I just want to correct a misconception that our apprentices are working for free. They're not working for free. They are getting a top-notch crackerjack education. They are compensated for their labor. Part of that compensation is their education, their housing, a partial health care benefit that is all supported by the farm membership, who understand that to keep our local farms, we're going to have to support them. And I might add that many of the farmers that have been trained have been farming in local communities that are all over the country, but there is a lack of affordable, accessible farmland in Williamstown. And I really hope in the future that the planning board, that we can think about ways to put land into such a protection that would allow a farmer to buy it and live in Williamstown. They certainly want to live and work in Williamstown, and there's certainly a tremendous opportunity in the Northeast to produce more of that food that we are going to seriously need in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're about five minutes from wrapping up, and so in a couple of minutes, I'm going to ask each of you to give maybe a one-minute closing statement, and we'll go in reverse order from the way we started tonight, which means Susan will go first, and we'll work down the line that way. If nobody else in the audience has a question, I have one other subject I'd like to raise. And actually, it was, I was inspired by an observation that Ann had in one of her, in part of her introductory statement, and that was the question of, on the question of affordable housing, a lot of communities around the country are looking at rezoning large, old houses so they can have multiple unrelated people in them. And you cited that as a possible opportunity to look at. There are pros and cons to that. I mean, you can fill in a neighborhood and make it, and maybe create problems with neighbors, but you also create potentially more affordable housing. I wonder if you could just speak very briefly to that, and then, rather than make everybody respond, if anybody wants to add, to chime in with an observation, go ahead.
Well, I would want to look very closely at our zoning bylaws and see especially where only single-family housing is allowed, and where we have a supply of large houses, too large for our current and future households. And aging in place is something very important to people, a sense of home, a sense of staying in your home. But you don't necessarily need to stay in a huge house. So the concept being perhaps aging in place on the first floor and renting out the second and third. Then you increase our housing stock, and if the person who lives on the first floor needs care, perhaps the caregiver could even live in one of the apartments. So it just loosens up some of the rules and lets us look forward as our community ages.
Any-
Yeah, I would like, I would like to add to that. Going back to my original statement, if there's flexible uses allowed in certain zones, this will allow housing and businesses to work in conjunction with another, as they did 100 years ago, where the guy that owned the general store lived upstairs. Well, they can still do that. The woman running the hair salon can live in the back. The chiropractor can have an apartment in the back, and that can, that can sustain her rent. I really think the key to all of that is zoning, as I said earlier, and if that could be initiated, it would go a long way towards taking care of affordable housing and providing services for the people of the town. One example comes to mind, and that's the LaHovik property on Main Street. I don't know if all of you are familiar with it, but it's where the fire department was talking about relocating. And it's about a three- to four-acre parcel that would be prime for cluster zoning so that houses could be built, but together, to make them more affordable, so that people, not just, you know, people that are wealthy, but people that are working, policemen and firemen and people, regular tradespeople, could afford to buy a new home. Cluster zoning, it's just something that, in a multi-use area, would be allowed, but currently, under existing bylaws, is not. That's all. Thanks.
Okay. If nobody else has a comment on that question, why don't we take 30 seconds or so to close up, and then I think we're done.
Can I just follow up on what you said?
Yeah, sure.
I think that's a terrific idea. And that also, sense of community is so important, and I think cluster, well-thought-out cluster zoning, especially for the elderly, could be terrific.
Thanks. Susan?
Just thanks, everybody, for coming and being so patient and listening, and I'm hoping that I can serve on the planning board if the town people decide that that should be so. I do think that housing is really important, and I think that it needs to be mentioned here that the most affordable housing in our town was lost. 325 homes, 325 individuals lost their homes. I would say, I don't have this for a fact, but less than 30 of those individuals have been able to remain in Williamstown. So we've lost a lot of our economic diversity. I think we need age diversity. I think we need economic diversity. I think we need to get some new small businesses in town, and I think we just need to be really open-minded, because we want Williamstown, and I like how Chris said he's going to approach his decisions. Be great to have his kids coming back here. I think that's really important for us all to think about. It's not just about us, it's about planning for the future. Thank you.
We just love it here. We moved from Newton. Our daughter now goes to Graylock, and she was a product of the Newton School system, which is an excellent school system, and she hasn't missed a beat. Graylock is every bit in keeping with the high level of education system that Newton provides, in our opinion. And there are some social benefits, actually, too. I really look forward, we look forward, to spending the rest of our days here, and that, yes, our kids will come here. My sons have purchased a property in Pownell, and perhaps when they become more affluent, they can also buy a place in Williamstown. I really look forward to the day that Williamstown can become the diamond of Northern Brookshire County, and I believe that it can. Thank you very much.
On the theme of young people, last winter, my husband and I held an informal discussion group around the kitchen table with several young adults who have one thing in common, two things in common. One, they grew up here and they love Williamstown. Two, they all left. And so we asked them, would you like to come back? And if so, what would bring you back? The answer to the first question was easy, yes, they'd love to. The answer to the second question wasn't that easy, but it was interesting, and I thought I would just give you a sense of what they said. They said, we'd like more of us. We don't want to come back by ourselves. We want more of us here. We want peers, we want friends, we want a sense of community, just like everybody else does. And we want jobs that allow for independence, flexibility, camaraderie. One of them even went so far as to look at that blue barn right on the North Adams Line on Route 2 and considered investing in it and transforming it into a collaborative workplace. It didn't work out. But it was an interesting idea. They want to feel part of a community. They want better transportation options to New York and Boston. They don't want to have to have a car or own a house, and they probably couldn't own either one right now. So, you know, there are some challenges we have to bringing young people here or to bringing them back here, people who already love it here and who would like to come back. But, you know, keeping in mind a lot of the things that the planning board is going to do in terms of walkability, neighborhoods, housing diversity, the home occupation, loosening up the rules on what kinds of businesses can run in different zoning districts. Hopefully, those will all help to bring back and to keep young people here. Hopefully, those will all help to bring back and to keep young people here.
Probably above all else, I'm a doer. I don't think any owner of a for-profit business can be anything other than a doer. Talking about things at my company only costs money. Doing things at my company is where I actually have the money to pay 34 employees every single The fact that our December 2002 master plan is almost repeated for word by word in our 2015 Economic Development Committee's plan or report says that one of two things are happening. Either we're not taking it seriously, or we're not very good at making these changes. I think that I, I know that my entire life is built around accomplishing tasks. I'm not very good at talking at them, talking about them all the time. Where I really like to get my hands dirty is when I can put my hands in that bowl and just get it done. I think that our Planning Board right now is lacking that person. It would be a terrible thing to have five people like me on that board. But, our Board needs one businessman who really knows through experience what it takes to start a company, to grow a company, and the things that would need to happen in Williamstown to have a company like that grow and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you to all of you. Well, I'm, I want to thank you all for taking the time to come out, and I want to thank all of you for standing for this hard work for no compensation. I wish that there were five open seats right now so that all of you could serve, but I also think that each of us in this room, even those of you who don't happen to get the most votes on May 10th, can all help with the process that the members of the Board will be undertaking, because certainly revising a master plan and thinking through issues like housing and recreation and land use and business and the seminal development ideas that come along from time to time, it's a hard job, and we don't, we shouldn't just leave it to five volunteers to go it alone. So, thank you all for coming. Thank you, Tila, for a great deal, a great amount of posting and organizing and emailing around over the last week or so. And I hope everybody watching and in the room will continue to pay attention to this discussion and will vote on May 10th. Thank you. Yeah.